My name is Dan Carney. I'm privileged to be the chairman of this Board of Trustees. Today's date is February the 8th. It's now 12:30 PM. We're holding this meeting in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. I do now call this meeting to order, and I call upon Mr. Dowd to provide us with the indication.
Sure. If you'll pray with me. Heavenly Father, we give thanks today as we meet, Lord, here at Weatherford College, Lord, thankful for another semester, or we pray that you would watch over the students, the faculty and the staff this semester, keep them safe, Lord, help them have a great semester of learning. Lord, as we meet today, Lord, I just pray that you would guide our thoughts and in our actions, Lord, and that everything we do be glory and honor to your name. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you can stand, please. I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two is public comment. Ms. Worley, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number three is the president's report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. Our new Vicki and Jerry Durant Hall is nearing completion. We hope to have the beautiful building completed in May and to hold a grand opening ceremony in June. The Deputy C. Board of Trustees will get a sneak peek at this unfinished building prior to our March board meeting. This structure is something that our entire community will be proud of for generations to come. Weatherford College has announced a partnership with the exclusive NIL partner of the National Junior College Athletic Association, Open Doors, to provide name, image, and likeness opportunities for our student athletes. Deputy C. is now among the first 11 NJCAA institutions in the country and just the second in Texas to enter such an agreement. The Coyote basketball team was recently ranked, excuse me, baseball team was recently ranked first in the nation by Perfect Game USA, and the Coyote softball team was ranked 20th in the nation by NJCAA. Our men's basketball team is coming off their best season in 15 years, and our volleyball team won the both, both the conference and regional championships. Nine of our 10 athletic teams qualified for postseason play last year. We look forward to continued athletic success this spring. Go Coyotes! Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Thomas Murphy, a campus police officer, resigned effective 1/19/24. Diana Floyd, a workforce specialist, has retired effective 1/31/24. Roger Fuller, our Assistant Director of Purchasing, resigned effective 2/2/24. And Tola Pleznik, our Director of Nursing, excuse me, is resigning and retiring effective 3/8/24. We thank Tom, Diana, Roger, and Tola for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment report. Our official census day enrollment was 5,185 students registered for the spring 2024 semester compared to a year-to-date enrollment of 4,964 students last year. That represents an increase of 221 students or a 4.5% enrollment increase. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you, President Farmer. Item number four on the agenda is the consent agenda and financial reports. Items A through E as has been posted under that item. Does anyone have a question or comment or observation? Yes, ma'am.
I was concerned, and Dr. Starlin is not here, but the three bids were so far apart. Two of them were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then the one that y'all are accepting is 88,000 over two years. So I just wondered if we're getting what we need or there's such a wide discrepancy there in the bids. I was afraid maybe...
They, he indicated that they did his needs.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about any of the items that have been posted? All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as has been presented? Does there a second? All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Item number five, consideration and possible action on Canyon West Golf Course Discount Policy. Ms. Jacey Edwards.
Good afternoon, and good to see you all again. At the January board meeting, you, the Board of Trustees, approved for Dr. Farmer to authorize and negotiate final documents with Touchstone Golf and Weatherford College. The agreement was executed on Wednesday, January 31st, and Touchstone assumed operations on February 1st. On Tuesday, January 3rd, a committee consisting of Dr. Andrew Cantrell, Lisa Simons, Derek Peterson, and myself met to discuss potential Canyon West Golf Course discounts for Weatherford College affiliate groups as requested by Dr. Farmer. The committee also discussed options for Weatherford, for the Weatherford College Foundation Golf Tournament and other foundation and college events per Dr. Farmer's request. The committee came to the recommendation that discounts at Canyon West Golf Course should be offered to Weatherford College faculty, staff, students, Weatherford College Board of Trustees, and Weatherford College Foundation Board members. The committee also recommended that Weatherford College Foundation, the Weatherford College Foundation Golf Tournament receive priority and date selection and receive a preferred rate, and all other foundation or college events be considered on a case-by-case basis. So the committee and Touchstone worked together to put something in the contract. Dr. Farmer approved the final discount language as written in the contract, and you can see that discount language in the executed contract that was attached in your packet as well as in the agenda item, the agenda item page. And to sum it up, the discount policy states that Touchstone will provide recommendations on discounted rates to Weatherford College, and upon our approval, those will be implemented. So no discounted rates will be implemented without college approval. Touchstone will not dictate that, they will only provide recommendations. So the recommendation for this agenda item is that the Board of Trustees approve the discount policy as written in the Canyon West Golf Course Management Agreement. In addition to that, Dr. Farmer had asked me to provide you with Touchstone's initial recommendations on discounted green fee rates, and you can see that in the spreadsheet that was provided to you in the packet. You will see the discounted, the posed discounted rates for Weatherford College, that would be staff, students, board members, foundation board members. And you'll also see what other institutions and their associated courses are offering, specifically discounted rates. Are there any questions on the spreadsheet or the recommendation or the discount policy?
The spreadsheet is at the very end after the contract, so right before item six.
Sure.
The spreadsheet she is referencing is in the contract right before item six.
He's telling you where that is.
Oh.
You're there.
Uh, Jacey, I assume Touchstone felt that these were reasonable discounts and that we could financially handle them?
Yes, and discounts are not out of the ordinary in Touchstone's business model. So these rates align with kind of Touchstone's management approach, and you can look at other courses where they offer discounts, and they align closely with that.
Touchstone was very comfortable?
Yes. Any other questions?
I take, I take it that that is, that's their recommendation, is this, is they're making...
Yes, yes. That is their recommendation. No discounts have been implemented at this time. It'll be implemented at a later date.
Okay. Well, I guess they've been at this a week. How are they doing?
Well, they started 2-1, and it's only 2-8, but everything's running smoothly. Existing employees seem to be taking the transition smoothly and seems to be going well so far.
Good. I see the comparison with other colleges that, I think you've got Texas Tech in here and University of Oklahoma.
Yes, yes, and that's, I mean, this right here shows that other institutions and their associated golf courses offer discounts, but as far as specific rates go, it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples. I mean, you've, Texas A&amp;M, Texas Tech OU are much larger schools than us in higher-end golf courses. Now, Western Texas College, they're also a community college, but the courses are very different. I mean, Canyon West has 18 holes with a nice clubhouse, pavilion, pool and poolhouse, and Western Texas College is a nine-hole course with no facilities, no food and beverage. So...
Hard to compare there.
Yes, a little bit.
You, you'll have an option for somebody to be a member, like still there, because you know a lot of those people that are there have, have a membership, like...
Are you saying a WC employee who already has a membership?
No. Will, will we still have an availability to the public to get a membership?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Keeping it the same way?
Yes.
Because I imagine all the people that are in that neighborhood have a membership, you know?
Yes, all memberships will remain, yeah.
I got you.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Is it, is there anyone who feels like they want to study this any further, or are we ready to move forward with a, a motion? Do I have a motion to... I still move. Motion would be to approve the discount policy as written in the Canyon West Golf Course Management Agreement. That's, it'd be the motion before the board, and we have a motion?
I move the read second.
And I have a second as well? All in favor? Appears to be unanimous. So approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacey. Appreciate it. Item number six is on the posted agenda, consideration and possible action for solicitation of goods and services of $49,999 or less by Touchstone Golf or Canyon West Golf Course. Dr. Cantrell.
How are you? It was considered, we looked early on, but right at the last minute, we were wanting to be sure that we met all bidding requirements since we do 50,000 and above with you all. And we called the attorneys to see what the state requirements would be, because that's what they came in and recommended, and they said, well, as long as we were doing up to the 49,000, and anything over 49,000 would be bid, that we will do that.
Is that correct, Jacey, what they were indicating?
Good.
So that's what we're recommending to you all, that we meet those guidelines. So if anything goes over 50,000, you will still approve those on a case-by-case basis.
But up to that, we will no longer, we won't be involved in that process.
Right.
All right. Any, any comments or questions about what's before us? Hearing none. Do I have a motion? Board of Trustees approve solicitation of goods and services of $49,999 or less by Touchstone Golf or Canyon West Golf Course as has been presented here today. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? All in favor? Unanimous? So approved. Item number seven is our reports from President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As usual, you have written reports from Weatherford College Wise County. Our academic and student services update, things continue to go exceedingly well up in Wise County, thanks to our strong leadership and the entire team up there. We're very proud of the progress from our Large Business of the Year of Wise County, Weatherford College Wise County. Then included in your packet this month is a written proposal for the 2024, 2025 tuition and fees presented by Dr. Cantrell and her team that looked at that. She will be coming back to us next month with a full verbal presentation for your consideration and potential approval at that time. And then on item number 7C, we have a very special guest with us here today. Weatherford College is a wonderful place for many, many reasons, none more so than our people, and we have, again, a very special person with us today, Ms. Nina Maniotis, who is going to tell us about our phlebotomy program, and we are very excited about the success that she and her students continue to have, just sustained excellence over a long period of time. Nina, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me today, Dr. Farmer, and thank you, Weatherford College Board, and all my student colleagues, DAs, executives, DAs and VPs in the audience. The phlebotomy program, myself, here's an overview of our curriculum. We do provide an introduction to all of the divisions of the clinical laboratory, not only the phlebotomy class and clinical, and students learn the clinical significance of laboratory testing, and they also have job interview, resume, professional behavior, and medical law and ethics, which serves them well in any medical profession that they may go into. Here are the program outcomes, which show that we generally trend towards a 100% graduation rate with zero attrition, and we have high job placement rates up in the 90s. This means a student gets employed in phlebotomy or a closely related area, or they continue medical education. And moving forward, we can see here that there are many pathways for a phlebotomy student to choose. A phlebotomy student could remain in phlebotomy, and I have some that have been supervisors now at LabCorp for over 10 years. Nursing is another big field for our grads, about 50% do go into nursing, and we have about 20 to 25% of our grads that will go into one of these other fields, sonography, radiology technician, OTA, PTA. I've even had a couple become morticians, and two went into research, many have gone into respiratory therapy. Meet Karina Rokas. This is a typical graduate of the Weatherford College Phlebotomy Program. Karina is a mother of four boys, and keep in mind that when students are in a two-year program at Weatherford College, they are advised not to work. If they must work, they are advised to keep that under 20 hours a week. While raising four boys as a single mother, Karina held down two jobs. She's worked for 11 years as a hairstylist, and she also has a job at Cook Children's Hospital as a student volunteer, student worker, and does non-invasive procedures on the children there, and Karina expressed that having four boys herself makes her be full of compassion for children. So she's trying to go for a full-time job since she graduates in May at Cook Children's. I just wrote her a letter of recommendation. Karina represented Weatherford College at our recent accreditation site visit. She just presented to my professionalism class, and she is on a full ride with a capital charity scholarship. Here's four more graduates to give you another sampling of the pathways where our students might go. The first student is Deja Spencer. She's a second-year sonography student, soon to graduate. She also worked for Weatherford College as a phlebotomia doctor after graduating from the program, and she worked at JPS. Kelsey Arts is another mother, she's not a single mom, but she's a mother, and she's in her second year of sonography, did great in the phlebotomy program. Noel Urbina is the next student you see there. She's one of our students that's gone into research. As a matter of fact, unexpectedly, March of last year, I received an email from Noel Urbina. Hello, Nina, I always, hope all is well with you. I wanted to update you on my current career position because thanks to you, I wouldn't be where I'm at. I currently work for John Hopkins in DC in their oncology research. I'm a laboratory coordinator. The research side is amazing and so interesting. I work right alongside the physicians more than anything else. It's so cool to see the research and see the differences. The next student is Kimberly Dennis. Kimberly graduated from the phlebotomy program and went into nursing and then also went into research. Interestingly enough, just this January, I received an email from her. I'll share a brief bit of it with you. Good morning, this is Kim Dennis. It's been a long time since we've spoken, but I wanted to reach out to you and let you know that I'm years into my nursing career. There's a few things I learned in your class that were incredibly valuable. There are many medical personnel that I encounter that are so unprofessional. They did not learn the basics of how to act and speak professionally, and it shows. I feel like I learned most of that in your class. I'm the only one of my nurses in my practice that can draw labs. Thirdly, and most importantly, the interviewing process. This is what made me reach out to you today. I have a panel interview tomorrow, and I'm not really worried about it. We did so much in class, I feel like I can manage my nerves and respond appropriately. Thank you for everything. Here's our faculty. I'm working on 48 years as a medical laboratory scientist, and I'm also a college history teacher, and I also have Ben Van Lenth and Beatrice Rosales helping me out. Both of those grads worked at Wise Health in the lab, now they've transitioned on to Medical City Weatherford, and they're our current faculty in the program. And I want to say I could not compliment these two faculty enough. I believe in gentle and soft instruction. I think students can learn more when they're calm and when they're happy, and I have two great faculty who are just excellent with our students. If a student so chooses to remain in the clinical laboratory, here is the career path there. The MLT is a two-year associate's program, and MLTs, medical laboratory technicians, can perform moderately in high-complex testing. If one were to go ahead and get the bachelor's degree, which is a medical lab scientist, then they're going to not only perform that complex testing, but learn all about the abnormal cells of the bone marrow in the bloodstream. You also now can get a doctorate in clinical lab sciences and become a laboratory educator or go into research, and the pathologist is always the chief person over the laboratory. Our curriculum is quite varied, and as you can see from this slide, it mimics the departments in the clinical laboratory. So my students, since this is a 16-hour college credit program, they don't just learn the phlebotomy. They're like, this is almost like a pre-MLT class, and they are actually laboratory assistants when they get out. My students can identify the cells of the peripheral blood, and they, they're quite well-schooled in all of these laboratory categories. In the interest of brevity of time, I won't go into too much detail. However, that is one of our grads right there at Baylor. That's, that's a picture of one of our grads with her card there at Baylor. We do other fun things in the phlebotomy program. We work with our nursing program. As you may know, recently, the COBORD limited to your programs to 60 semester credit hours. This means that it's not possible for nursing students to get quite as much lab and needle skills as we may like for them to have. So we turn our students into the teachers. We invite the RN students, AN students into our classroom. We're actually doing that, just coming up, week after next, and our students become the instructors. So the nursing students can then gain IV skills, blood drawing skills, blood culture collection skills, and so much more. Another fun thing we do is health fairs. We had an employee health fair here that our HR department sponsored. Lisa Martin and some others worked really hard on that, and at that health fair, we found two Weatherford College employees that were so low on blood, they required transfusions. And we also sponsor summer camps, whether that might be upward-bound students or, in this case, the UNT summer camp, which now we have kind of, we're going to do that as a routine thing. So we love to get these campers into the laboratory and maybe encourage them. We've worked with STEMANIA when we had Dr. Stamatys here. We've worked with the fourth graders. We always try to get people interested in science. What we go for, and we learned this term from our public safety professions here at Weatherford College, we go for command presence. So the little ragtag bunch that shows up on the first day, this is what they look like in the end. They look like somebody who can show up and that has the skill set that's needed to get the job done. We achieve these goals because of you all, because of the support we get from administration, from the board, from Perkins Funds for things that are not in the local budget. That's how we got our 12 microscopes. Publicity for the program always helps, and if we got an MLT program here at Weatherford College, that would be great. So in the end, I want to thank you. Weatherford College is such a great place to work. In the Health Science Division, we provide pathways that lead not only to a job, but to a professional career, a career that adds meaning and significance to one's life, a career that places one on the team of caregivers that are a vital source of comfort and hope to those who have sick loved ones. I want to thank you all for supporting not only the phlebotomy program, but for all the health science programs here at Weatherford College. Weatherford College built the beautiful Don Allen Building that we have occupied since 2016. We have the latest technology and supplies to train our students, and as Dean Boswell says, "You better hope they're trained correctly when you become a patient." Many of my phlebotomy graduates are regulars in the Don Allen Building as they progress through a two-year associate's program. I have three graduates currently in sonography, two in RadTech, two in respiratory care, and an untold number in nursing. A former student of mine, Kaylee Black, was just hired at Weatherford College as RadTech faculty. I see our graduates in hospitals and clinics. They are phlebotomists, supervisors, nurses, and technicians, all working to heal our patients. Weatherford College changes lives with each graduating class of health science students. These students are able to provide for themselves and their families, and they make our community stronger. We provide the pathway to a bright future, and it is a privilege to be part of it. Thank you for the wonderful support, the facilities, the colleagues, and this great position as phlebotomy program director of Weatherford College. Thank you.
Nina, I just want to say, the pride that you exhibit in what you have accomplished here and what you are accomplishing here is quite evident in the words that you speak and your approach to all of this. I just can't thank you enough. I think... I think, I think you have demonstrated what these programs can do for the people of our community and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am so proud of Weatherford College and I started working in 1974, just in the lab in '75, and this is by far the best job I've ever had, by far.
How many years have you been here now?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, is that all?
That's all. I wish, I would've come sooner. I don't know where you're.
You're gonna make a career out of it at this point?
You bet.
Dr. Mallett's question.
Is your program maxed out? Do you need more students or where are you relative to how many students you can accommodate?
We get about 15 per class. That's what we need to get to satisfy the 20 per year. Sometimes enrollments drop a little bit lower, like I have nine right now. I did have 10, one had to drop off. If I get about 12 or 13 every class, I'm good with maybe my numbers. And the enrollments have been good and steady so far, but it would definitely help if we keep that publicity and Katie Edwards and others are really good to go ahead and put our phlebotomy up on the sign. So we're always looking for more students, but we've been pretty good to keep the enrollment steady so far.
So you'd need extra facilities and personnel to expand the program?
Well, maybe a full-time person might help, but we're doing pretty good and they, the architects worked with us. Dean Boswell and Dr. Eaton allowed us to work with the architects, so our space is perfect. They were just thinking that maybe if one fine day Dr. Farmer had mentioned maybe getting us some offices near the Don Allen, but he has things well in hand.
We thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really do.
Didn't mean to run off when y'all had questions.
The, the next agenda items, number eight, future agenda items or meetings, and I turn to President Farmer once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As previously mentioned, next month, Dr. Cantrell will be bringing a formal presentation for your consideration and possible adoption of the 2024-2025 tuition and fee schedule. And next month will be the annual evaluation and employment contract consideration of the college president.
Thank you very much, sir. Item number nine is announcements. Ms. Worley?
Yes. Tomorrow night, we have a piano recital from RWC International Piano Competition winner. And then this Saturday, our softball has their first home doubleheader against Northeast Texas. There's several other baseball and softball home games listed in your agenda for you. Next Tuesday, we're going to have our second annual Mardi Gras festival, which is going to have gumbo and jazz music. Be a really fun time. And then there's another chance for some jazz music on February 22nd. And then our theater department will present Little Women at the end of February, beginning of March.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Item number 10 calls for the closed session, where we will enter into a closed session for real property matters or employee matters need to be dealt with. So we will adjourn into a closed session at this time.
Once again, the time now is 1:59 p.m. Still on February the 8th, 2024. We have concluded our closed session meeting with Weatherford College Board of Trustees. We are now back in open session, so you take the next agenda items. That will be item number 11, consideration and possible action for real property. There is no action under that agenda item today to be taken. Item number 12, consideration and possible action for employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. And there again, there is no action to be taken today in that item. So we're down to the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn today?
No move.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we are adjourned.